Okay, good evening. I'd like to reopen the regular meeting of the Bronxville Board of Trustees February 12th, 2024 and ask all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we are starting with a special presentation by Sustainable Westchester on the Westchester Power Program. And we appreciate if Mayor Bramson, what is your new title?
Mayor, I'm the Executive Director of Sustainable.
Excellent. Well, congratulations. For those listening, Mayor Bramson was the Mayor of New Rochelle, head of the Mayor's Association, and a wonderful colleague of mine. So congratulations on this new job, and I can't think of someone more qualified and deserve it. So, welcome.
You're very kind to give me that introduction, Mayor. It's a pleasure to be with you and with the Board of Trustees. As you pointed out, it's a little surreal for me to be on this side of the dais instead of that side. But there are benefits as we look ahead to the storm that's arriving tomorrow. This will be the first time in 30 years that I've enjoyed snow. So, good luck to you with the struggles that you will no doubt experience.
Because we do not. Yeah, yeah.
Exactly. So I also want to introduce my colleagues Nick Tedrow and Anjali Khanna, who are with us. Nick will actually give the bulk of our presentation, as he is more experienced and knowledgeable than I am. I want to say that it's always a pleasure for us to have an opportunity to speak directly with one of our member municipalities, to look at opportunities to deepen our partnership and encourage even fuller participation in our programming. And there's no better example of that than the Westchester Power Program, which, as you will hear from an environmental perspective, is one of the most impactful that's ever been launched in our region. So with that, let me turn it over to Nick, who will walk you through the details. And then certainly, if there are questions or comments that are most appropriately directed to me, delighted to participate in the dialogue. Thank you very much.
And I think while, Nick, while you're, I think we all, we did our homework.
We had slight changes.
Oh, slight change, okay.
They're not very substantive, but it's well, not really.
And it's important to notice, we have a whole cadre of our Green Committee here tonight in support of, and frankly, it was the Green Committee that, with Helen's encouragement, that got us to have you come give us tonight's presentation. So, welcome, Nick, as well.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so, am I all going to?
Please go to the lecture, to the mic.
Yes. At the lecture. Okay. You only use the lecture?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you mind doing slides?
Not at all.
All right. Okay, so, once again, thank you for having us. Great honor, happy and excited to talk to you about the Westchester Power Program. So we'll go ahead and get into it. Go ahead. No, oh, yeah, hit the little arrow. I didn't train him.
Yes. There we go. What, no? There we go. All right.
So just to, you know, recognize the Village of Bronxville as a, you know, already example setter in climate action and highlight some of the work you all have done, some of which has been in conjunction with work we do outside of this program at the, or at the Sustainable Westchester. But just kind of want to recognize the great work you're doing and are excited to talk to you about how you might take the next big step with the CCA. And obviously, that comes with a lot of rewards that you've probably been briefed on by your task force already with the CEC and in other ways. So, yeah, let's keep it rolling. And obviously, the reason we're here, why we do all this work, why the task force does their work, is because we have an enormous challenge in front of us going into the future decades with climate change. And we're going to see the effects of that day to day, month to month, and so on here, particularly in New York and in your area. I know flooding is a big issue. So we're only going to see, you know, greater challenges occur as our infrastructure isn't able to match these more intense, more impactful weather events that are going to be climate change driven. So we really need to act fast on getting these solutions in place and starting to mitigate everything. So with that, Westchester Power, we are a program that helps communities, municipalities across Westchester leverage their collective buying power as consumers of electricity in bulk and go out and purchase electricity at competitive rates and, of course, find fuel sources that are value-driven for you all. So we launched this program back in 2016, started with 20 municipalities, I believe, and now we're up to 29, with Yonkers, the city of Yonkers being the most recent joiner back in 2022. And you can see here, this is a snapshot of the municipalities. So within Sustainable Westchester, we have 44 members of the cities, towns, and villages, and 29 of them participate in this particular program. 27 of those, you know, have a green energy default product as their selection, and then two of them have a standard supply, which is kind of a mixed fuel source, not clean, 100% clean fuel source as their default option. And we serve roughly around 145,000 accounts between residents and small businesses here in the county with that. So at a basic level, you know, when we're talking about energy supply, you can look at your bill, but it's basically aggregated into two parts, your supply and your delivery. So with the delivery side, that is all managed and by Con Edison, your utility. So that is everything that goes into paying for their crews and all of the various inputs that are involved with making sure that the electricity is getting to your homes, your businesses reliably, and when things are broken, they go out and fix it and so on. And this is the side where they make their money. And we don't have a choice with that. The utility is the utility. They own all this. That's where we're at with our current infrastructure. But on the supply side, you know, us as consumers, we have choice about the type of energy we procure, you know, whether it's clean or not, if we like fixed or variable rates and so on. And there's options we have, and that's where Westchester Power comes in as an option that is municipally designated by folks for their consumers locally. And so the main feature of this format is it's an opt-out. So functionally, it's the same way that electricity supply has always functioned for anybody before we were around. You open an account with Con Edison, and by default, you start getting their electricity supply without any other options. So in this instance, it's actually the introduction for the first time of a choice that doesn't require you going out to a private market company and signing a contract. And rather than it being just the default local utility, it's an option that is selected by your local municipality. So your representatives, who you trust hopefully, have made a decision that's value-based. In this instance, with our program and renewable energy, to select a default supplier who's going to provide electricity that meets the values for its consumers, while also giving an option to go back to Con Edison if they want to do that. But it is an opt-out, as we are in place as the default option. So not everyone's automatically eligible for this. It's an important note. A lot of times, communities sign up and they think everybody's coming into the program. There are exceptions to that. So this is really a program for folks who would otherwise get that Con Edison default and not, you know, people who are signed up with a private company, have a private agreement for electricity with one of the energy providers that are licensed in New York State, and folks who are in an assistance program like Heap and get financial support on their bills. You know, those aren't savings we could guarantee them through this program, and so they're protected from being taken out of the most advantageous thing that would be good for them. So, and there's maybe some other micro-ish instances, but that's basically, you know, the delineation of who's qualified. So the way that we go out and procure electricity, we solicit bids, we hold, open an RFP and bidding process, where we invite licensed ESCOs, energy service companies, out there in New York State to come and bid against each other in a reverse auction for the right to be the supplier for our communities for electricity. So municipalities go into that, deciding, I want to get a renewable energy bid, and we, you know, run that auction and come out with a value-based contract that we think is going to be great for the communities. And so those range typically from a 50% to 100% renewable supply at this point. And, you know, again, people can choose opt-out of this if they want, but through that process is, you know, how we get to the point of being able to offer that renewable supply, without too many details beyond that. So a little snapshot of the current Con Edison municipality rates we have, you can see right now in the Con Ed area, which is our Con Ed communities besides Yonkers. The city of Yonkers aggregates on their own, has their own contract for supply, but the 24 other Con Edison territory utilities are together as one aggregation. So when we go and do those bids, these suppliers are bidding to be the supplier for all 24 of these communities. So with that, right now, we offer a 100% renewable energy supply for the Con Ed group. And then the city of Yonkers just renewed their contract, so they had their first one ever in 2022, and we just renewed them this winter. So they actually have a 50% and a 100% option this time. And you can see there, this is just to illustrate as well what our current rates are there and then what the market kind of offers there. So we went and we do this periodically to see, you know, where our rates stack up against the private market competitors, you know, basically the other options folks would have for renewable energy if they wanted to go and try and, you know, find their own deal. And so you can see there, there's a few different companies down there and varying terms and prices. So that's just kind of an orientation of where our prices are at right now versus, you know, a few days ago, basically. And then we do have a non-renewable rate, that standard rate I was talking about. And so that is more akin as a product to what Con Edison offers in terms of the fuel source mix, but a big differentiation there is that the Con Ed rate is a variable rate, and we offer, historically have offered, a fixed rate. So this graph is just demonstrating, since the first month we did this program back in 2016, the vertical blue lines are the Con Ed rate over those months and years, and then those, that red horizontal line shows our fixed rate. And you know, slight adjustments when the contracts turn over and we get new prices. But this kind of hopefully visualizes one of the other benefits of the program with that fixed rate, in that it insulates folks from those big spikes that you might experience and probably have all experienced with your Con Ed bills over certain points, maybe in the wintertime in particular. And so folks know, have the predictability to budget around a particular rate, and again, are protected against spikes that are disfavorable. And, yeah, so, and then, of course, we're here to do this primarily for the environmental impact. So we've had a huge impact thus far. So in 2023, roughly about 270,000 metric tons of CO2 mitigated, equivalent to roughly 60,000 plus cars taken off the road for a year. So we're making some good strides year to year in growing the impact. In terms of Bronxville's theoretical customer base, we have public information available through the utility registry managed by NYSERDA. So they put the, us eligible customer count for Bronxville around 2,600, so 2,100 for residents, and 500 for small businesses. And then we typically see around a 15% initial attrition. It kind of depends on the communities and how green-focused they are or not, and what the rate looks like, but, you know, ballpark it there. So assuming that baseline, we could see maybe roughly 2,200 accounts from Bronxville as, you know, part of the program if we were to do initial launch at some point. And, yeah, there's an associated greenhouse gas mitigation associated with that as well. So in terms of the steps of how this all functions, the first step for, you know, enabling CCA locally is passing local law. So a public hearing posted for the public to come and make comments, and basically a motion to assert your home rule right to establish a CCA program. And then that rolls into a mandated two months of public outreach and education, where we hold a variety of information sessions, you know, social media postings and virtual sessions, do all kinds of various forums, and that's up to collaboration and input on what's the most effective for your community. But that's something that we are, you know, happy and often, for most cases, drive that effort in conjunction with local groups too, who are keen on being a part of it. And then, once we get through that 60-day period, we package up all of the necessary elements and file that to the Public Service Commission, Department of Public Service for approval. So those are the local enabling law, the evidence of our outreach, you know, templates of our RFP and Energy Service Agreement. That would be the governing documents of any agreement you entered into for energy supply. And after that all gets reviewed and signed off, you have the authority. And it's important to note, up until that point, you don't have a commitment to do anything still, but you've just made yourself able to enter into a supply contract through a CCA if you wanted to. But once we clear all those hurdles and get the approval, then we start talking about, okay, what are our goals here, what kind of energy do you want, and here's what we can do in terms of a structure and timeline for getting a contract set up. So in terms of that, this is a generic timeline that we're offering here with some, you know, prospective dates based on where we're currently at with our Con Ed aggregation right now. But, you know, I mentioned, it starts with the enabling law, 60 days of outreach, around two weeks for a DPS review, and hopefully everything's, you know, Ts are crossed, Is are dotted perfectly. Then we, you know, put out an RFP, leave that out for a couple of weeks, hopefully get a lot of great responses from ESCOs out there who want to come and bid. And then we award that bid over, you know, about a month period from RFP to final contracting. Then, you know, this timeline of dates here is our prospective renewal timeline. So the current Con Edison contract is expiring October 31st. So in theory, if Bronxville wanted to go forward and be a part of that aggregation, you know, this is kind of what we're looking at right now. So it would be tight, but, you know, we're still kind of early in the process, so we don't know if this is final or not yet. Some things, you know, always come up and timelines get elongated. But, you know, in theory, in your next meeting, if you wanted to move forward, this is kind of what that timeline would look like to be a part of that aggregation contract next time around. And then, you know, the CCA is great, not just because of this foundational and, you know, reliable service that we've provided to just go out and get a vanilla green rate for customers and grow that program just on that basis and operating standard alone over the years. But it's definitely the foundation of how we're going to try and take bigger steps and make a fuller transition into the renewable energy future and be on the forefront of the clean energy economy. So with the CCA, you know, we're looking towards, excuse me, growth opportunities and diversifying what it can offer. And a couple of examples of that are opt-out community solar. So this is something we're pushing really hard to get approval for at the state level, and it would run through the CCA, but it would provide a mechanism for us to serve disadvantaged communities, income-qualified folks that we currently don't serve in the program, and provide them with some automatic benefits through community solar credits. You may or may not be familiar with our community solar program, but this would basically be an opt-out program for community solar and automatically, you know, enroll folks into a program that's going to benefit them financially. And then, you know, moving even beyond that, trying to build direct supply here, the program can, you know, leverage a lot of power in working with developers and attract developers and state agencies about actually having renewables built here locally throughout the county and plugging in directly to green electrons that are going to, you know, be built here, provide opportunities here, you know, for jobs and other types of financial pluses. So we have a lot that we're planning around this and are excited, and the more momentum we build through, you know, adding communities and so on, is really, you know, more wind behind our sails. So, yeah. In a snapshot, you know, the benefits of this program were vetted. So obviously, at your level, in order to approve the program, you do a lot of careful deliberation and consult each other and review what the benefits and costs are. But at the state level, this is a very closely watched program, so there's a lot of diligence that goes into making sure that we're in compliance, working with the state directly, and we, you know, assume that full role here as the administrators for all of the municipalities and making sure that everything is going as it should and we're, you know, running it faithfully in the way that it needs to be run. It's a very strong consumer protection program, for sure. Again, I mentioned the fixed rates, so cost control stability. A lot of communities have appreciated that over the course of the years, having the predictability in their bills. Advocacy in education, we do a lot of things like this, a lot of communications, a lot of outreach and education, and then, of course, mitigating climate change. I think we're going to dig deeper on a couple of these just quickly here. So I kind of already hit the points on this, but, you know, unlike a private contract that someone might enter into with Verde Energy or whoever, there's no contracts associated with our program. It's, you know, free to come and go as much as somebody wants. If they end up opting out, that decision is respected for the term of their account as long as they have that account open with Con Edison. They'll never be auto-opted back in when a contract rolls over, but they have the freedom, if they decide they want to come back, to opt back in. So it's a really flexible and advantageous resource or option to have, we feel. That's very different than what you have to do, you know, with cancellation fees and dealing with the private company if you want to exit an agreement. And, yeah, we don't have any surprises, you know, with rate increases or anything like that, just a lot of built-in security with what we're doing here and, you know, being a service-based nonprofit. And we always communicate about changes in pricing and so on. Hey, what are you doing?
I don't like that.
You're letting people know we're at the end.
Growing up in my first responsibility.
Yeah.
Sending me back. And, yeah, we do, you know, another great thing about us is we're a community organization. I live in Ossining, Noam's from New Rochelle. We're, you know, we're here to provide a service, you know, you're our members, so we want to give the best service we can. We want to educate folks. We want to, you know, hold spaces where people can come and learn, even if they're choosing to opt out. You know, hopefully, we're building, you know, people's literacy around their bills, a lot of bill education, taking the time to meet with folks, and we're out tabling and doing stuff and providing, you know, the collaborative space, hopefully, that people appreciate in order to, you know, kind of make this a collective effort that we're building to green our communities. So with that, thank you. And hopefully, I kept that to 10 minutes, so, you know, we're not used to, we're used to do that, but, yeah. Yeah, if you have any questions or anything, happy to answer them.
I might start, and then I'm sure my colleagues will. So a community opts in for everyone, and then the homeowner or commercial businessperson, if they so desire, opts themselves out. Is that how it works?
Yes, with the exception of folks who would not qualify automatically again, so people who have private agreements for electricity, folks who aren't income-qualified, you know, anybody else who would otherwise receive that just basic default supply for electricity from Con Edison would qualify for opt-out enrollment. So the way, again, that functions is there's a lot of proceeding outreach and education and hopefully really effective communication going out to the community so that they're aware this is coming. And then they also receive a letter directly to their home with a 30-day window for initially opting out. So it'll explain everything about the program and the structure, the rates and so on, and, you know, where to find more information. And that 30-day opt-out window before actual enrollment starts is that person's opportunity to say, okay, I don't want to be in this program, I'm going to opt out. So then they'll never enter the program at that point. If they, some, you know, people get busy, they miss the letter, whatever, they could, again, come back the next month and say, I want to opt out, and then it's just a function of, you know, Con Edison processing it one or two billing cycles, and they can still leave the program. But we try to give as much opportunity and create as much awareness and, you know, education about the program as we can when we're in these, you know, pre-launch stages, for sure, so that people aren't surprised, people, you know, feel like they've been well-informed about things and are hopefully not put off by the opt-out structure in that sense. But they still always have that freedom, yeah.
And how about a community opt in or out as a, as a community, not as an individual?
So for, like, your municipal buildings and?
No, just say, say Bronxville wanted to do the program, and for some reason, a year from now, they, are there opt-out features?
Oh, sure. Yeah, so every time we go out to contract, they're typically in the range of one to three years. So if you sign a contract for electricity supply, you're going to be committed to a private company and us for, you know, that term of that contract. But as those are turning over, you know, the community can decide, this didn't work out very well, this past contract, we're going to not participate in a renewal. So you would just choose not to go forward on the renewal for another contract after that in that intervening period.
So you commit to the life of the contract?
That's right.
Okay. And since its inception, the program, like the first community, say, that signed on, just in real dollar cost, has it been flat versus Con Ed, a savings, a benefit? I know it takes away the vagaries of the ups and downs, but overall, has it been, just curi, you know what I mean, from the first community signee until today, what's the relationship to Con Ed?
It looks like that line is, except for the spikes, is kind of over the Con Ed price.
Yeah, so I think the best way I could answer that, I couldn't tell you definitively, like, a number. One, everyone has different billing cycles and accounts and things like that, and certain communities join at the beginning and not at the beginning. On a contract-by-contract basis, it does vary, you know, it, those lines have been up, those lines have been down. So, you know, we don't guarantee savings in this program. It's impossible to do that since, you know, we've been doing a fixed rate, and that is fixed, and there's no predictability in what a variable rate, what the commodity market for electricity is going to do. So, you know, that does change over time, and I think no one wants to give an input.
Can I maybe just add to that question? Does the size of the community have an impact on the contract and the rates? You know, if we have a small community and, let's say, 25% opt out, do we get, you know, a less attractive contract than a bigger community that has 100% opt in?
The answer to that is no. If you were to join, you would be aggregated with all the other Con Ed communities, with the exception of Yonkers. In theory, the larger the aggregation, the greater the bargaining power, the better deal that we can strike. So it's likely to be to your advantage to be part of a group rather than going it alone. So in answer to the prior question, we actually looked at the full history of the program, and the number of months when we were above the market and the number of months when we were below the market were nearly equal to each other. So there's been sort of a variation. Now, it so happens, the most recent contract tended to be a little bit above the market, and that was the misfortune of concluding the contract just as energy markets were spiking. This was when the Russian invasion of Ukraine commenced, and there was an expectation at that point, looking at the futures market, that energy prices would continue to escalate. In fact, they went in the opposite direction. So there is always that possibility, but of course, the backstop, as Nick pointed out, is that any individual can opt out at any time. The other thing I would emphasize, and this was in the presentation, but reflect on it, is that if we're really going to do a fair apples-to-apples comparison, it's probably not best to look at the standard rate compared to the Con Ed utility rate, but rather look at the fully renewable product that is offered to the great majority of our communities and compare that to the renewable product that is available from private energy companies. And there, even in this most recent contract, as you could see, we stack up quite favorably.
Hey.
There's apples and oranges there between.
Can I ask a question? The experience of municipalities after their contract is expired, have the majority of them renewed again? Do you have enough, you go back enough years that you've got experience on that?
We've never had a community leave yet. So we've only added since we launched in 2016. So, and we've gone through, let's see, this aggregation, now we have Yonkers doing one renewal, and then the nine, five communities up North County are part of NICEG's utility territory, and they've all renewed each time. So, you know, in some, there's probably been about 10 renewals and no one's left.
It's interesting, it plays out differently in every community. In some communities, it is a simple process that moves forward without any controversy and a great deal of support. In other communities, it seems to be a more difficult process. And sometimes, it's just a function of the cast of characters in that particular village, town, or city. But it is notable, for example, one of us, we were talking earlier about the experience right next door in Yonkers. The initial signup was, I would say, quite difficult. There were a great number of community meetings, a significant level of concern that was expressed by some community advocates. The renewal that occurred this year was virtually without comment. And I think it illustrates that whatever fears may have surrounded the program initially, they were quelled by the actual lived experience of the city. And by the time it got around to renewal, there was a widespread satisfaction that the program had operated as intended.
What was your experience in New Rochelle when you implemented the program?
Very easy. There was universal support on the city council. To the extent that there was any public comment, it tended to be favorable. Anyone who was not comfortable with the program felt comfortable opting out, as Nick pointed out, without any penalty or fee or anything of that nature. So our experience was smooth and positive.
I just have a couple of questions about the mechanics of the business from your perspective. How many ESCOs are there that? perspective. How many ESCOs are there that, you know, you solicit bids for to be your alternative supplier, and what kind of contract periods do you sign up with? Because, you know, presumably you have the same options than other buyers in the market, you know, do you buy a one-year contract, or do you want to lock in a price for, for three, or do you, I guess this is a business where you can't really hedge. You have to go with one supplier who makes a commitment to you, and then they're the folks who flow through the energy through the grid to us. But how many ESCOs and what sort of your bidding process for locking in prices?
Yeah. Yeah, great question, great question. So I think I mentioned, you know, the starts, we release an RFP, that goes out to a wide breadth of qualified ESCOs. And again, not every, not every mom and pop is going to be able to come and bid on this and handle the size of an aggregation in business. So there's, there's a good amount of suppliers, though, who are large enough and, you know, sort of good enough in this industry that can handle that. So the way that we think we get an edge with this is however it ends up, however many it ends up being, you know, that come out to, actually, I'm sorry, I need to drink that water. It's, you know, it's a competitive reverse auction, so it's a live auction, they're competing against each other. So again, talking about size of the communities in aggregate, and the attractiveness of having, you know, that much business available, and having the live auction format, we think we're getting, you know, more of those margins out of those suppliers by virtue of them competing each other, against each other through that process. So, you know, that's one way, obviously, that's different than a person just going on the internet or making a phone call and maybe haggling a little or whatever, and going out and doing it. And then on top of that, you know, we are, you know, we're not energy market experts per se, but we put a lot of energy and time into strategy, timing, consulting with, you know, vendors we, we pay and work with when we enter these processes, who do this for a living. We have a vendor called Transparent Energy, and their whole business is energy market analysis, working with suppliers, and running these auctions and setting them up for the best success possible. So, yeah.
I do have one other question, but it's answered me, is if you make a decision, we want to solicit bids for a two-year contract, and then you get RFPs for that, because it's obviously easier to compare the terms of contracts if you're sort of getting apples-to-apples, you know, basis. I mean, so that's sort of what, what you do? When your contract comes up for renewal, you sort of say, here are the parameters that we want everyone to bid against?
So what we typically have done is we would, and what we will do, is we'll go in front of all 24 of these, or maybe 25 of these communities, and, you know, we'll present an MOU and say, here are those parameters of what we would like a commitment for. The memorandum of understanding lays out, you know, the general principles of what we're trying to achieve with the contracting process, the bid contracting process. So that would, in the past, has typically involved a price not to exceed ceiling based on, you know, our market indicatives at that time, period. So, you know, we've done research, we think we're getting a fair price. That's how we've operated, you know, historically with this all. And so we would solicit in the actual auction, a range of different periods. So one year, two years, 18 months, you know, we get a range, and we assess all of those bids and see, you know, what the value points are for that. And then, you know, we would theoretically at that point be authorized to kind of execute a one- or a two-year deal as long as we were meeting the price criteria for the products that you all wanted for the, for the solicitation.
And then, sorry, just one more question, and then I'll, I'll yield back. Just so I, to what extent do you think that the strength of your program is the ability to steer business to companies which have perhaps a more green approach to energy as opposed to just being purely priced? So that, you know, if, if we were to make a decision as a community, you know, to go with this, would, would you say that that's really a price-driven solution, or is there an element of, oh, there's sort of broader, it's sort of a green policy angle to it as well? Because I think, yes, some people see these alternatives, and they may think, oh, are we sort of subsidizing greener forms of energy, which may have its pluses or minuses, or is this purely an economics decision? From, from your perspective, if you're selling it, Josh, which would you say?
I might give a comment here and then pass it off to you. So I wasn't sure on the question about, you know, when assessing the companies themselves, like, is it a value-add if that company has a particularly stronger initiative around renewable energy? And does that factor in? Is it, was that the first part of that?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, typically, I wouldn't say these companies are strikingly more amazing or not than the other in that regard. If there were thoughts you all had about, okay, you know, I want to give more points or consideration to a business in some respect, that's something we would listen to and certainly consider for that. It's not exactly something we've heard before or considered in the processes, but, you know, that, that is up for discussion for sure. And then, yeah, typically, it's a price-based thing, but there is consideration about the, the number of years. We do want to deliver the best rate possible, so obviously that carries the most weight for communities and their constituents a lot of the time. But, you know, it is definitely situational, and, you know, there is an assessment done of, okay, is three years a really long contract for this price? Do we anticipate some relief going down? You know, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into that, but...
So I think you, you've put your finger on a, a key question surrounding this entire program. In my view, if you're looking at this purely from a consumer perspective, it is still a positive program. What you achieve is stability and predictability. You achieve the bargaining power that comes from aggregating demand, and essentially, this entire process is brokered and managed by a group of experts with deep experience in the area, whose knowledge of how to navigate the ESCO market is likely to be greater than that of the typical consumer. And you receive protections from the sometimes predatory practices of the private market. As was pointed out, there's never any chance of a penalty, there's never any chance of a fee, there's infinite flexibility. So again, strictly from a consumer point of view, I would say this is a positive measure, which, again, creates an option that would not otherwise exist. You know, the, the default, which is present for all of us right now, is a non-renewable supply with highly variable market rates that fluctuate month to month. By doing this, you create a new option which is not otherwise available to your consumers. Having said all that, I will acknowledge the primary motivation is to achieve an important environmental objective. I mean, we are talking now, as a state, about very ambitious objectives which have been laid out in the Climate Act. If we're going to get close to achieving those objectives, it won't be because of one action here and another action there, and people doing the right things in tens and twenties, although that's great, we encourage it. It's going to be because we've transitioned to clean energy by the thousands and by the tens of thousands. And it is only through a program like this that you can achieve that rapid uptake of green power at the scale that's necessary to get anywhere close to the goal. And just to sort of emphasize a point that was made on one of the slides here, if you take all the great things that municipalities are doing, that I'm sure you're doing in Bronxville, you know, putting in LED lights and weatherizing public buildings and encouraging sustainable practices among your residents, you take all of those things, this single program is responsible for more cuts in greenhouse gas emissions than all of those other things combined. And so there is this really powerful reason to embrace this model in a way that is going to advance our sustainability objectives for you as a village, and for our region as a whole, and even for the state, because this is really a model for the state. The last thing I'll say is, what I've said has been recognized by state authorities. It's why they've designated this as, this is among the highest-scoring impact actions that a municipality can take. So bringing it full circle back to financial impacts, by doing this, you provide yourselves with much greater access to significant state grants, that you can reinvest in other public goods, as you, as you judge best.
Any other? I think I have just one last question. Did your slide say the average opt-out is 15%? Did I read that?
So, yeah, that was for an initial launch of the program in a community.
Okay, just trying to understand.
Yeah, and again, it's, it's definitely widely, wildly various based on the community. You know, you seem like a very green community, so it might not quite be that high, in some communities, maybe, not so much. But, yeah, it's...
But that's sort of a number that...
Yeah, if we were to average it or ballpark it, that's where, you know, and I'd say the, you know, the, the launch of the Yonkers, which we've covered, was a little bit rocky, kind of skewed that data a little bit, too. But that, they, we've seen a lot of opt-back into the program, as Noam pointed out, and positivity around it, so, yeah.
Okay. Any other question?
One question?
Oh, yeah, certainly.
When I was studying this program, I was in Midland Gardens, which had one utility building, four buildings, was it's a commercial and is not comfortable. Is that still true? And are there any other requirements for a private building?
Great question. So...
Could you do me a favor and repeat the question for the TV audience?
Sure. So the question was, in Midland Gardens, I'm not familiar with the development, but has a four, four buildings apartment, and one bill, yeah, and it's considered not qualified for the program. So we do only service classes SC1 and SC2, which are basically residential and small commercial businesses. So the threshold of what defines a small commercial building or something bigger, you know, a small commercial is basically the same profile, more or less, as a residential unit. So it's, you're really thinking like mom-and-pop's kind of stores and stuff like that. So, yeah, right now, those are the two classes that we, we can auto or opt-out enroll in the program. If there are bigger, you know, developments or, or businesses that want to try, we, we do take those requests, and we'll work with a supplier, but they ultimately have the right to say whether they would take that account or not, because it might, you know, represent a huge capacity increase that, you know, their financial people in their offices say, we can't take that into the program under these rates. So there's case-by-case optionality there, but...
Okay. Trustees, any other question?
Just based on, on what you've said, it sounds like there's no additional burden on our village administration or the municipality. It's...
Zero.
Yeah.
It's quite simple. Other than reviewing the documentation and assuring your...
Yeah, the initial period of your public meetings and everything, but it's...
There's zero cost, zero administrative burden, both in the signup period and afterwards, when, as Nick pointed out, we'll handle all public inquiries. You could always send people directly to us. There's no expectation that you need to be involved in the administration of the program at all, except to the extent that if you ever want to be. But, but we're happy to, to be your full support, soup to nuts.
The one caveat I would say is, you know, we do, we have built up sort of what we call municipal liaison relationships with most of the communities where there's, you know, whether it's an administrator or some other kind of designated person in that, in that community or the municipality, who maybe fields a lot of the calls that come in from whatever, you know, is going on. You know, we, we try to at least have one person who's equipped with a lot of knowledge, well, a lot of knowledge, enough to, you know, knowledgeably answer questions and help somebody who walks in the door or something. And obviously, we are happy and encourage you to forward anyone on who comes to us, but we do try to make it, you know, a collaborative relationship at some level, because ultimately, you see things we don't and have perspective we don't, so that helps us make the program better over time as well. So having, you know, every, kind of like a close relationship with, you know, an expert, a local expert in the municipality is a good thing. We try to, you know, help work with that person as much as they're able to do it, but everyone's busy, of course.
All right.
I just say, oh, I'm sorry, did you have another question?
I, I just had a question, Mayor, as to what you think next steps are. I mean, is this something, you know, we have our Village Green Committee, I, I, you know, if we were to pursue it, I'd sort of like to maybe hear, you know, what they think about, you know, kick the tires about a little bit.
They've been pushing for it, for us to consider it for a long time.
You know, the grass never grows under your feet, I must say.
They're raring to go.
But I understood that the proposed schedule would be to notice an enabling law, which would, I guess, require some paperwork. But what do you perceive as, as the options for the board to consider going forward? I'm just, I've had a very interesting presentation, but I just wonder, you know, Helen, as Lee is our other green committee, and Mayor, what do you think we should...
Yeah, I think, well, I need some time to digest it all, because I have to, and the one, I can't lie, this one last concern, 40% of our villagers live in co-ops or condos, live in large buildings. And I wasn't, I was hoping the answer was they were part of it. They...
They would, I mean...
They would, okay, because that...
And if they have their own utility account, that's, their building's not paying for it or something, that's a different achievement.
Okay.
So they're, you know, have their own utility account, they pay their own electricity bill, then they're qualified for co-ops.
What, what I anticipate, knowing this board, is we might be reaching out to you with, after we go home and think of other questions that didn't come to the fore tonight, and just, and kind of put our village and its sort of unique size and needs, and see how we, how we fit in. And frankly, I might be calling my colleagues in places like Haste Villages of similar size, Larchmont, that's kind of honestly where I see us going, is having a little, you know, not reinvent the wheel, but talk to folks who are in the program.
Well, certainly, that makes eminent sense, and, and we will be available to you for any follow-up questions and additional information you may need, one-on-one conversations, if that's, if that's a benefit.
Perfect.
And I just want to say, on behalf of our entire team, how grateful we are that you were willing to devote so much time to us on what I'm sure is a, is a busy evening, and for making my maiden voyage as a representative of Sustainable Western so very pleasant. So thank you very much for that.
You are always so welcome here, Mayor. Yes, and Nick, that was a terrific present. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Nick.
Really helpful. Thank you.
You can find us.
Okay.
You can find me, Mayor.
I, I can find you anytime. Yeah. And thank you, Green Committee members, for your support. It was nice that you came tonight. Appreciate it. Yeah.
Did anybody else in the audience have any questions? You guys did. Realizing they're the only one.
All right. Back to...
We've got one question there.
Oh, Jim.
We're back here.
Yeah, just cut to the mic.
Sure.
I know that in your presentation, nuclear energy is not considered renewable. I was just curious as to how that decision got made. I mean, it's sort of theoretical, because I guess you need to point to your own possible supply, and that's out of the grid.
Yeah, I mean, practicality, if it were a priority, would not be feasible. But, yeah, I think, you know, for our focus, we're really more concerned with...
It's a lot of state, right?
Yeah, and it's a state-defined thing, so the state doesn't define it.
I see, okay.
There's a few things I could rabbit, down a rabbit hole with, but yeah, it is a state. We, we purchase renewable energy certificates that are registered with the state, and those nuclear facilities, those credits aren't part of it.
And hydropower?
Hydropower is the primary source for our, our supply right now. Yeah, so...
Canadian, or is it...
No, it's all New York State. So in order for something to be considered renewable energy, in the eyes of New York State, it has to be a New York State supply source, it'd be registered, yes. So if we were to buy wind from National, or, yeah, or Connecticut, yeah, whatever, it wouldn't technically be allowed to be called renewable energy per the state's regulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Board Member Hayden. Those were good questions. Thank you. Bye-bye, Noam. All righty, we are back. Mayor's report, I have a very short one. And so colleagues, step in if I'm forgetting things. Just a couple wonderful things. The movie theater Picture House had a sold-out event. I think it sold out the day they put the idea forward. It was a documentary about the Greystone Bakery, which is in Yonkers and Hires. Anyone who comes to the door who needs a job, whether they have a prison record, it doesn't, nothing matters except their willingness to work. And their number-one customer, they make brownies, cookies, their number-one customer is Ben &amp; Jerry's Ice Cream for their brownie fudge ice cream. And Ben and Jerry came to Bronxville to support this documentary, and they were two of the most delightful people. It was a real fun night in Bronxville. And the Pictures House is having another fundraiser March 9th that everybody can sign up for. This just sold out so quickly. And then Ken Burns, speaking of sellout, Ken Burns, the historian, came for the 25th Annual Historical Conservancy Annual Historical Conservancy Lecture, and my understanding, there was a crowd of 400, and they had a wait list as long as they had the number of seats they had. So, that was a, a huge success. And also, Trustee Behrens and I met with the head of New York Presbyterian, and we plan on meeting with the president of Iona next week, just to, to keep close to our big institutions and our partners, which is really important, and I'm, I can tell you, all the news was good from New York Presbyterian. And Jim Palmer spends most of his waking hours thinking about flooding, and so we discuss that, his frontburner issue in the village, so I think you and I spent a lot of office time on that subject as well. But those are, oh, and my other favorite, please, these are the dolder months, shop local, because the merchants really notice a fall-off, a big fall-off, in January and February, so if people could buy their, their birthday presents and things in town, that would really, really...
Valentine's Day presents.
Valentine's Day, that's right. Good point. Helen, we haven't gotten yours, but...
I'm reading mine.
Okay, just, and that is all I have. Trustees, any other announcements?
I would just say Haug and Dawes is closing on Monday, I think this coming Monday, for a month-long renovation.
Oh, okay.
So, if anybody's looking to get an ice cream cake, go, go now, because now and the end of the week, put it in the freezer, because they're going to be closed for a month. And with respect to the New York Lawrence Hospital, Westchester, NYPD, Westchester, Paul Dunphy did mention to the mayor and I at breakfast that the Labor and Delivery Ward, which is getting renovated, which is a great source of interest in a lot of people in this community that are giving birth to babies, is going to be opening midsummer. So, and they, we suggested that they do tours for people who want to see it in the fall, so they were, they're going to arrange that. And they're also going to start on the lobby, which is another big project for them, renovating the lobby and reinventing it. So, they've got the plans and they're getting ready to go on that.
Perfect, thank you for adding. Any other, any other news?
Just a quick note to say the Bronxville Library Patio Project started in late January. They closed the back entrance, I think everybody's seen the fence around that, but there's a temporary pathway that connects the people who are parking in the library lane to go into the front entrance. Everything's progressing, you know, on schedule and on budget, and with a late May or late spring completion date, so I think it's going ahead very strongly.
Perfect.
And I'll just add that this Sunday, I think it was, I just was driving back from Samir's, I said, "Yeah, why don't I just drive by the new Maltby Park on a Sunday?" Just, you know, to see what was going on on a, you know, early February Sunday morning. And, you know, we've been blessed with some decent weather, but, you know, there were so many people there, you know, I think if you had suspended disbelief, you could have said this was like, you know, spring or summer. There were just so many people out there, and, you know, to the trustees on this board and the mayor, who really made it happen, or helped make it happen with some private citizens, I mean, it was just really so exciting to see so many people out there, you know, on a February afternoon, I thought it was just terrific.
What a, what a nice way to end the trustee reports, thank you. And now, Mr. Palmer.
Just two items. Hopefully, it'll be a distant memory in a few days, but for anyone watching the board meeting, just as a reminder, it seems to be that we're going to get our first significant snow event of several inches or more tonight, so just a reminder for everyone to shovel their sidewalks within 24 hours after the snowfall has ended, and then, of course, downtown merchants need to do that in the morning and the evening, and make sure their sidewalks are safe throughout the day. Also, just wanted to mention that, as you probably all heard, that the, that Westchester County was, did receive an emergency declaration for the September 29th rain event, so for our municipal facilities, our public infrastructure, we will be applying and for funding for all those damages that we documented over the course of that, that day and the several days following those events. This is, but this declaration is not for private property, but for all the public infrastructure.
What's, do you have a estimate of that, how much roughly?
I would estimate it probably be in the range of $30,000 to $40,000, if that Steve and Lori and I will work on tirelessly applying for. It's a, it's a very tedious process, but we did start that initial application process, and that's why we document the damages when it happens, so...
Did you say, was that a state thing or a county?
It's, 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 well, there were several counties that were, that met that, met that threshold, including Westchester County, so...
Right, but so the money's coming from the state?
Yes, state, federal government to the state to us.
Okay.
No, I should emphasize, yes, it's, it's federal monies that will come to the state, and we work with both, both FEMA on the federal level and then Department of Homeland Security on the state level.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and now I move to approval of minutes, and I need a motion to approve two sets. One, the executive work session and regular meeting of January 8th, 2024, and then the second set, the executive meeting of January 16, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second. All those in favor? Aye. And again, thank you, Mary Ann, terrific minutes, as usual. Mr. Palmer, new business? We don't have a lot.
Nope. The first item is to schedule a public hearing for what we're calling our first local law of 2024, and that's regarding sanitary sewer lateral inspections, repairs, and ongoing maintenance. And this, this local law will make sure we make it available on our website. Of course, anyone can also contact me directly at Village Hall, and this follows our discussion on this issue in our work session, and it's actually related to the September rain event, but it's, it's an effort to start getting the, requiring homeowners to inspect their own individual sewer laterals, sewer lines, from their house to the public main. And essentially, the two criteria in here where we would begin with is we would require those inspections, a homeowner to simply provide to the building department proof that they've had their sanitary sewer lateral private line inspected and identified as being in, in a proper working condition, either just prior to sale of their residence, or what's also proposed in here before you for your consideration and for public input is on, when someone would make improvements in a value of excess of $100,000 for their residence. And the reason why we're, we're considering this local law is because private homeowners have had issues with what we call INI, inflow and infiltration from a significant rain event, inflow and infiltration entering their sanitary sewer line, entering the village's public line, which in turn results in stormwater entering the sanitary sewer system, which is, is prohibited in Westchester County, and it also results in homeowners experiencing backups in their basements. So, this is, it's clearly something that we need to educate the community on, we'll certainly include it in our, our next newsletter, explain to people exactly what constitutes their, their private lateral and why it's important, but given that the village housing stock is, is much older, there is, there's a need for homeowners to make sure that their, their lateral line isn't in good working condition. It's, it's definitely to their benefit, and some of the other communities have, well, it's starting to be addressed throughout the county, because we recognize that we could do all we can for our public municipal lines with lining, but if we don't begin to address the 200,000 lateral lines from individual homes, then we're going to continue to see issues with overflow and backups in homes, et cetera.
And our law's pretty much a duplicate of what Scarsdale is doing in a lot of other communities. We're just trying to join the, the group that's doing this. And again, you said triggered by home sale and/or major improvement, correct?
Exactly, yep.
Okay.
It would just be too cumbersome to, you know, require that more frequently, you know, let's say somebody's got, you know, an old house, they haven't sold it for 20 years, they're not doing any improvements, is it too cumbersome to include just a more regular inspection of any kind?
I think that's something that we, I think that's something we could certainly discuss. I mean, the other communities that we looked at do have, at the end of the day, what we would be requiring is what the other communities are calling is a certificate of discharge. So, someone would provide documentation to the, the billing department via certification from a plumber that their sanitary line has been inspected, et cetera, and then the billing department would issue a certificate. If, if we did it based on valuation and sales, that's probably in the vicinity of about 80 certificates that would be issued by the billing department per year. Could we build on that threshold by perhaps, perhaps having a lower value? I'm trying to think of communities that have adopted the ordinance with, we need some kind of trigger, but I think, I would certainly love to...
Yeah, just to capture more of them.
But I would love to have a larger penetration, because, yes, even with 80, 80 properties per year, obviously, it's going to take us...
Forever.
Twenty years, I guess, you know, 20 plus, but we wanted to at least start the process. So, I'm open to, maybe with council's assistance, or maybe better yet, Stephen's assistance, we can see if there's something else out there in a community, even maybe outside of Westchester, that has a deeper penetration than just...
Maybe it could relate to the age of the home. I mean, you know, who knows, but it'd be interesting, to Helen's point, doing it only 80 a year when we have 2,500 addresses is, is...
Right.
It's not a big amount.
No, it's, that's true.
Okay, but we need, do I have a motion to schedule the public hearing for our next board meeting?
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? No, we're scheduled.
Mayor, I just have two quick comments...
So, that would be, I'm sorry, so that would be March, March 11th, right?
March 11th.
I, I just have two requests of the village administrator and village council to, to think about by way of possible amendment along the, you know, further to some Helen's, trustee Napp's thoughts. For renewal event, I think we should clarify that it's for permits or construction with a value that exceeds $100,000, but also include the concept, if, if an app, if, if someone applies for a building permit, and they've applied for $25,000 over the previous three years, and it's another $25,000, so that there's some concept of that being an aggregate amount, because I think what we're saying is if people do a certain amount of improvements, I don't think spreading them out should really exempt people from being caught. And a question for council is, with the fees schedule, I assume that this includes the authority for the village to impose late fees, so that if someone is late in complying, we don't actually have to go to the, you know, criminal adjudication of liability to collect fees, because if someone hasn't been doing something for, you know, six months, I think the village should be in a position to sort of say, "We get to charge a late fee of X amount, and maybe we'll just agree to settle for a late fee," rather than having to hold the threat of $2,500 or imprisonment for 15 days for every day that they're late doing it. It just seems to me that we should have some flexibility to collect money if people are late in doing it, because as a practical matter, we probably aren't going to be prosecuting a lot of people and throwing them in jail for not doing it, but...
So, I think this fee is with respect to the issuance of a discharge compliance certificate, so if they don't get that certificate, they're, they're not in compliance in that set, in that sense.
Yeah, I, I just want to make clear that the village can charge an appropriate late fee if people are not in compliance, because I think we want to be serious about doing it, and I think that we should have, I think Mr. Palmer should have a stick, short of threatening to sue people for a big fine, just to get compliance, just administrative remedy, rather than just a purely, you know, take them to court and sue them for non-compliance.
Yes, we'll look into that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. Palmer, Resolution B, authorizing a permit fee for stormwater applications.
So, again...
Similar.
Yes, in keeping with the discussion of sanitary sewer and storm sewer, so, yes, as the board knows, we're doing a very, requiring a very rigorous review of stormwater applications for properties, in particular, properties that are providing additions and thereby increasing their level of imperviousness on their property. And while single-family residences have to go, while certain single-family residences go before the planning board or zoning board, and thereby, we would set up an escrow account, in many instances, the, the addition that a property owner is undertaking does not require going before a land use board and establishment of an escrow, and in those instances, we need to establish an application fee to recover the costs of having our outside consulting engineers review those plans, which is a requirement of any property owner that's pursuing an addition. So, this is, it's just time that we, we effectuate this, and what I proposed here is, or in the resolution, is a $1,000 fee, and that's not inconsistent with our neighboring communities, they're also in the $850 range. And the reason we're also choosing the $1,000 fee and not raising the, the permit fee, the building permit fee, which you had done several years ago, again, is to not penalize someone who's doing an interior renovation, obviously not increase, increasing the level of imperviousness and not requiring that stormwater review. Some communities may not have a stormwater fee, but rather they have a higher building permit fee, so, anyway. So, the purpose is just for, so we can add that fee to our fee schedule, which is in the appendix of the village code.
I, I mean, I think we have to do it, given the water issues, so I, I will move this one. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Great, great, thank you. All right, and the next one is just that time of the year for notification of the outstanding properties that have not paid the 23, 24 village taxes. The treasurer provide you a breakdown of all those properties, we have to identify those, and then the resolution is simply to recognize that the, the lien sale will be on March 14th this year at 10:00 a.m. in the Village Hall Conference Room as customer.
Is this comparable to last year in terms of the number and magnitude of the outstanding?
I think that the number might be, the number might be a little higher right now, but as you know, what you're getting is the list that was outstanding as of, as of the, as of the due date at the start of January, when the second half was due. So, as, the treasurer will always provide you an updated one. I think, I think that report has even changed a lot since, well, in the last couple of weeks, and it'll continue to change more so. Lori, Lori and the deputy treasurer, Kate, have done an amazing job at reaching out to all the property owners, frankly, individually, and I've observed them coming in one by one. So, the answer is, I think it's a little bit more at this point, but I think what we really want to see is where it's at, just before the lien sale.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, though, that our treasurer, unlike everywhere else, we, we don't relish big late fees, that we actually call people to tell them to pay their taxes, because the late fees are regulated by the state of New York, and they're quite high, and given that our taxes are quite high, so I'm always asked, I think people sometimes think that those fees, the local government, we have, we have no say over what the, the property tax penalties are, and we, we just try to help people avoid them, as opposed to look for revenue, so, thank you, Lori.
Right, and on that note, right, and of course, we use the email system, we do a lot of outreach on that, what seems to still be a certain amount of occurrence, and Lori knows this, but... What seems to still be a certain amount of occurrence, and Lori knows this better than I, but is the, upon property transfer, that for one reason or another, some of that information still does not seem to be conveyed, which you think it would be at time of, at time of closing, but that seems to be...
All right, so I just need a motion to authorize this in a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
By the way, great job to you and Lori for the outreach prior to the bills being due, because I think that's really a great service to all of the residents.
She gets back to everyone.
... statements. A copy of this statement is mailed once we have a deed for a fact of, I mean, there is a sale. The problem is the new owners many times do not live in the property, and therefore they don't succeed.
Yeah.
Right.
Because there's construction on their estate.
Yep.
Also, the real estate agents do not tell the new owner that they have a tax liability coming up in a couple of months. Sometimes their attorneys do. So when we, when their attorneys call, I speak with them, and I tell them, are you representing the buyer seller? Inform this, the buyer that they have a second half tax liability. If it's the first half coming up, please tell them to come to Village Hall, introduce yourself, we'll be happy to give you a copy of your bill, because they have the information and we don't relay it to them. So they insist that they have a closing document which identifies some taxes that have been paid, but it only identifies in the first half of the state.
It's those lawyers again, right?
Yep. Thanks, Lori.
Yeah.
Just say.
Yeah. All right. And then we have a schedule of public hearing to propose the potential need to use a tax cap override. We do this every year.
With the budget.
I'll move it.
Yeah. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
All right, and the last resolution, too, we, we do every, every few years. It's, it's our agreement with our, with fiscal advisors, which is our firm, that's a municipal advisor that assists us with preparing our debt financing for our, and providing our debt service schedules as necessary, helps us in preparation with our bond issuance, which is something that we're going through now, and assists us with everything that goes with the issuance of the bonds, the legal notices, providing the schedules, et cetera. So well worth it. We've used fiscal advisors before, their services are terrific. Their schedule that they attached has been increasing about 2% per year, 2% to 3% per year. I don't think that's that unreasonable. It's just a lot of work that goes, goes into that, so.
All righty.
I'll move it.
And I'll second...
Just a quick question, sorry.
Sure, sure.
This is, I think I asked the same question last year. It's always a one-year contract. That's better for the village to do it year by year as opposed to...
Would we get a bargain if we, yeah?
Because I feel like we've used them for years, right?
Person for the last 11 years.
Yeah.
Beth Ferguson. She was with Catherine Marcus, and she was with fiscal advisors. We keep the same crew.
Yeah, so...
Our bond council is the same.
Right.
Our attorneys are the same, our auditors. And it works like that with municipal advisors. It's not the kind of thing where you want to go to a bid every couple of years, because it's not just a cost saving. These are people that know the village, know what your financing needs are, and are willing to work with you to develop the kind of bonds that that benefits the village. Because you have issues that come up, whether or not you should ban a bond.
Yeah, exactly. My point is, why not do that for, if we have such a good relationship with them, maybe two-year contract, three-year contract, lock down a lower price.
Like, maybe they would give us a better deal if we said we're committed to you for three years.
You know, yeah, we can ask. The way this agreement was actually written is that we, we can, we continue with them unless, but there is a termination clause in here, but we, but we could, if the board wants to approve a contingent on that, on an extended period, if we could get a reduction in the fees, you know, I think they're adjusted tied to the CPI, but we can ask.
I mean, my guess is, is looking at this type of contract, it seems to be really sort of a per-transaction type of contract. So, you know, some years you're going to have less and some you're going to have more, and...
So there's no advantage, you're saying?
Well, well...
And you want the person that you work with at the firm, you don't want to, if they leave, you might follow them to the other firm.
It's not just that, it's also the... You know, it also affects the price. And it's the amount of issues that you have, it's also the number of series that they're running forward, whether or not you're rolling with other bands with it, the complexity of the transaction. There's like a lot of different factors that helps. Ours are usually very straightforward, simple instruments.
But if we don't use it, we don't, yeah, but if we don't use it, we don't, we don't pay for it. It depends on the, the level of activity.
We just pay for the SEC filings that require...
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, because I hear your, your concern, trustee Knapp, it's just that here, it's not like we're buying a fixed quantity of amounts. It's like, it's not like we're buying salt for road stuff, where if we bought more salt and had a longer-term contract, they'd say, oh, okay, I'll give you a better price. Here, our deal flow is sort of irregular, that if I were them, I'd, I'd sort of say, well, can you guarantee me a certain amount of additional business, then I'll give you a discount? But I'm not sure that we're in a position to guarantee them more business in exchange for a longer contract. But, but Jim, I'm happy to go with whatever you think.
Worth the ask, right?
Always told, doesn't hurt to ask, is the point, absolutely.
I think we should, we're approving this not subject to coming back with an answer. I think we should approve it, just, just look, look into it.
Understood, understood, yeah.
And did we, did I approve it, or did we have a motion? Why didn't we do it again? Do I have a motion to accept the contract?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Trustees, that was our last resolution. Does anyone, did we forget to mention council? Anything?
Not that I can think of.
No? Okay. The public? Do you have any questions of us?
Public.
Yes.
Public.
The public, yeah. All right, then, a motion to close this meeting and meet again March 11th.
So moved.
And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? See everyone in March.